Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kettering Board of Education regular session. We are here at Kettering Fairmont High School in the recital hall. It is October 21st, 2025, 6:00 PM. Okay, so first I'd like to just remind the group of our mission here of Kettering City Schools. The mission of Kettering City Schools in partnership with the family and community is to guarantee a superior educational learning experience for all students by providing a positive and innovative learning environment while responsibly utilizing resources. So, Mr. Blevins, would you like to take the role?
Mr. Lawder?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mrs. Kane?
Here.
Mrs. Richards?
Here.
All right, two, adoption of agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Blevins?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawder?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
If you are able, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move into the next item, I just want to recognize that Mr. Martin is not here at the moment. He is going to try to make it here this evening. He had something come up last minute that he could not get away from in time, but we hope to see him come in at some point during the night, but we'll see if he can get here or not. But, okay, so four minutes from September 16th regular meeting and October 7th work session.
I move that we approve the minutes as they're presented.
Second.
Mr. Blevins?
Mr. Lawder?
Epstein.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Okay, recognition and reports. Mrs. McCarty Stewart, I understand you have something to present?
Well, President Martin, you are just in time.[157.01][157.01](Laughter). Vice President Richards did a fantastic job getting us started, so I'm gonna, we would like to recap, a summary on where we've been in our journey with the Future Ready Master Facilities Planning Project. And so really to kick us off, so we stay in kind of the order that we're used to, are you ready, Mr. Von Handorf?
Mr. Martin, Board of Education, it's a privilege to talk to you a little bit tonight about our Future Ready Facilities Plan. Last year, we worked with our community to develop our strategic plan cultivating student-centered excellence. One of our goals in that strategic plan is to develop high-quality, modernized facilities that support evolving technology, equitable learning environments, and long-term sustainability. This vision for our Kettering City Schools Future Ready Facilities Plan. This plan is rooted in the longstanding motto in our city, "Great schools, great community." On the screen, you see one of the challenges that we are facing are aging buildings. Back in the 1940s and 50s, our community made a deliberate visionary choice to build some of the most innovative and highly sought-after schools in the Midwest. That decision attracted amazing teachers, staff members, and families to Kettering, Ohio for decades. As a parent and staff member, I'd like to thank those community members who supported the constructions, the construction of our schools back in the 1940s and 50s that made Kettering the amazing place that it is. Today, however, those buildings are 60 to almost 80 years old. For example, Van Buren Middle School was built in 1949, making it 77 years old this school year. Several others, like Oakview Elementary, built in 1952, Beavertown and Southdale were built in 1954, making them over 70 years old. Recently, we had a community facility meeting at Van Buren Middle School. We had a glimpse of what was happening in Kettering when Van Buren was built. First, there was no city of Kettering when Van Buren Middle School was built. We were in Van Buren Township. Big band jazz and huge, big band and jazz were huge, and Elvis Presley was still unknown. We were using rotary phones, about 9% of our households had TVs. Most of our families were sitting in their living rooms, listening to record players and radios for entertainment at home. In school, we were amazed by the new technology innovations of film strip projectors, carefully timed up with record players for sound, and this new technology called the Ditto Machine. These buildings were not designed for educating students in the age of collaboration, innovation, technology, and creativity. While our staff has been making the very best of these things for some times, we have failing roofs, very old electrical and HVAC mechanicals, and tiny cramped classroom spaces. Over the years, we've been able to update some modern pockets, but our buildings as a whole are still in the 1950s. The reality is, we no longer have innovative, desirable buildings compared to our neighbors. The Future Ready Facilities Master Plan is designed to have a positive impact on our community, focusing on three key areas. Cost savings, this includes improved operational efficiency with heating, cooling, electric, and maintenance, and rightsizing our buildings with cost savings reinvested into programs and services for kids. We also expect to realize consistent and balanced class sizes. The plan calls for no staff job loss, with staffing adjusted through attrition, and will protect and enhance our educational programming in maintaining optimal class sizes across the district. Finally, and something near and dear to my heart, is educational opportunities for kids. We aim to modernize equipment and learning spaces for exploration and collaboration, optimal accessibility for all of our students and staff, and increased opportunity for staff and student collaboration, and equitable and broader academic and extracurricular offerings for all of our students. We have worked through this master facilities process, and we have observed the stark contrast between our small outdated classrooms and the modern learning environments in neighboring districts. If we are to recruit and retain exceptional teachers, attract new students, and continue to be a community where families thrive, we must modernize our schools. Our schools are a pillar in the community, but they are trapped in the 1950s, while our students and teachers are living in 2025. We have a critical, time-sensitive opportunity to leverage co-funded state money to ensure our schools remain a cornerstone in this great community. Next, I'd like to reintroduce our superintendent, Minnie McCarty Stewart. He will talk a little bit about the specifics of our master facilities plan.
Thank you, Mr. Von Handorf, and I apologize for those in the audience or those tuning into the video. Dan Von Handorf is our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. So I'm honored to be, have the opportunity to collaborate with the Kettering community on this long-term generational facility plan. I always enjoy hearing Dan's inspiring stories about our vibrant history, and it reminds us of Kettering's longstanding commitment to education, this commitment that has guided us as we develop a plan for the future. So about three years ago, we embarked on a comprehensive assessment of our facilities as part of the Board of Education's vision and the district's mission that continues to guarantee a superior educational experience for all students by providing a positive and innovative learning environment while responsibly utilizing our resources. We are taking action on this plan now because we have a historic opportunity to secure $159 million in state co-funding resources from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. This comprehensive plan addresses the critical needs identified by the OFCC's assessment, which recommends replacing all but one of our current school buildings. And if you think back to this slide, you probably know which the one building is, and that would be Greenmont, our youngest building at 21 years. And all the other buildings have been recommended by the OFCC to build new. And I'll explain a little bit in the timeline about our Fairmont High School. The OFCC's assessment determined that we'd be fiscally responsible to partner with the state to build new facilities, then to invest local funds into endlessly repairing and renovating decades-old infrastructures. And then next slide, we have a timeline that will help break this down. In light of this, the significant building assessment results that we received from the OFCC, we have worked collaboratively with our consultant, internal teams, a dedicated steering committee of students, community members, parents, and staff to create a manageable and segmented plan, and we've had some very engaged community members in our community forums, as well as through our staff meetings. This sequencing of the segmented plan is the most financially and operationally responsible decision for the district and the taxpayer. As a result, we have divided this 10-year plan into two segments. In the first segment, we have prioritized the most immediate and critical need, that's starting with Van Buren Middle School, as our oldest building at 77 years old. Van Buren Middle School is increasingly a concern due to costly and temporary repairs that only address but do not solve underlying infrastructure issues. We determined that the most cost-effective way to provide an optimal instructional program is to build one new middle school adjacent to the high school. This location, that is fronting Far Hills, is a strategic decision to enhance academic and co-curricular equity for our middle school students. Consolidation will significantly enhance academic and extracurricular opportunities, enabling our new school to offer a broader array of advanced and specialized courses, and expand extracurricular programs and activities for all our middle school students. This focused concentration of resources ensures a richer, more comprehensive middle school experience. Another key focus in the first segment is a new academic wing at Fairmont High School. And this is where I'll pause for a moment and explain that OFCC, because of the new, the buildings and the renovation that have gone on around it, we qualify for that to be just the academic wing. We would create it new and just build up the new academic wing of the high school area. It will feature collaborative, experiential learning spaces to best prepare our students for career and workforce development. So Segment Two, as you can see, as you move down the timeline, commences around 2028. It will focus on a master plan to design and renovate Greenmont Elementary and construct four new elementary schools. This phase will also include necessary updates to our high school cafeteria and modernize our outdated career tech classrooms. Ultimately, this comprehensive plan will deliver much-needed upgrades to our instructional spaces, establishing a beautiful, efficient, and future-ready school district for generations to come. Central to this plan is the consolidation of our buildings, which will create operational efficiencies and enhance the learning environment for all students. The design of these spaces and the selection of elementary school locations in Segment Two will be developed through extensive community engagement. We will partner with experts to determine the best geographical sites, ensuring optimal functionality and safety for our students. This long-term generational plan will right-size our district and maximize innovation learning opportunities for our future. So I'm going to, at this time, introduce Treasurer Justin Blevins to provide a detailed breakdown of the project's funding mechanisms.
All right, moving on here into the, there we go. So what you're looking at here on the left side of the screen is the breakdown for the entirety of the project, showing the $159 million that the OFCC or state share would be contributing to this project, meaning that the local share over the two segments that we discussed would be $321 million. Now, in comparison on the right-hand side of the screen, what that graph there shows you and that $350 million number represents is what we have estimated the cost would be in order to repair and maintain our existing buildings. So without taking advantage of the local share, the cost to address the critical needs with 100% local dollars is going to include consolidating into existing older buildings, and at that point, we would be using $350 million of local money to essentially Band-Aid the facilities that we currently have. Here we have a breakdown of costs for Segment One, based on an estimated 5% 37-year bond. And so the way the process would work is, the board will be presented with a first resolution tonight with the cost for Segment One on a bond issue resolution. If passed, that will go on to the county auditor for certification of millage, which will then come back before the board at the November 18th meeting for a second resolution. And if at that time that was passed, it would go on to the May ballot for an election or vote. To look at the reasons for addressing these issues with a bond issue, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission assessment results came back stating that it would be more costly for us to renovate the majority of our buildings than to have a demo and construction. And the permanent improvement funds that we currently use to address the issues that we're seeing in our aging buildings has, the issues have started to exceed the amount of PI funds that we have available. So this plan would provide the district with approximately $159 million from the state throughout the entirety of the project. These tables show an overview of the current project breakdown, as well as the impact of paying off the 2002 bond. So cost savings from paying down the 2002 bond over time present savings to the community. And what we've determined is, based on how Segment One of the project ends up, the timing of paying off Segment Two, or 2002 bond, for when we go after the Segment Two issue presents an opportunity where that second ask could possibly be a no tax increase ask for the second bond. So then we wanted to come back to discuss again, what happens if we do not partner with the state to receive $159 million to help fund this Future Ready Facilities Master Plan? At that point, then we are looking at, how do we go about finding $350 million to address our buildings that will, at the point of correcting the issues with them, now be 10 years older than what they currently are? So this would be a heavy lift, and at some point, it'll have a negative impact on the general operating fund. You guys just passed a five-year forecast last month, and so if we had to start addressing facilities issues with more general fund dollars than the cash balance that I spoke about last month, and kind of the timeline of reserves that we had, would very drastically be reduced. And then lastly, this is not my thank you slide, but it was in regardless. So I'm going to return to my seat, but then you can ask questions or whatever comments you'd like to make.
Do we have questions for Mrs. McCarty Stewart? Or Justin?
Question for superintendent or the treasurer. Good presentation. I think something, I believe I understand it correctly, the public would need to know that if we don't take advantage of the state money, the $350 million is still needed to fix up the buildings, and you still have to go to the public for that $350 million to patch up older buildings. And that's why the state is recommending the action that they did. Yep, okay.
I think you said it really well. I don't know if there's anything to add to that, other than the state money that we're talking about. You know, the state doesn't sell a product or provide a service that they get paid for. The money that we're talking about are tax dollars that our community members have contributed to as well, and so this goes out to the entire state. So if we pass up the money that's being offered through the OFCC, that money will then go on to the next community.
And meanwhile, during that project, we are being fiscally responsible in looking for how do we right-size, how do we consolidate, knowing that the OFCC came in and did such a comprehensive assessment in terms of square footage, our student enrollment, student enrollment growth trend analysis. So we're accomplishing both. We're looking for those operational efficiencies, maximizing that, and hopefully doing this with the new construction that will really provide that long-term stability for generations to come in this overall 10-year plan. And that hopefully someday, somebody's talking about 50 to 70 years from now about this project.
Ms. McCarty Stewart, Mr. Blevins, I would like to ask that, in the consideration of the projection on, should we not pursue this, and we would have to consider the $350 million, and I will say $350 million plus, to take care of our existing buildings, it's still in the slide, it reflected that consolidation would still be on the table. So therefore, is it safe to assume that we would also see potential cost overruns in regards to clearing those properties and then maintaining said properties once the existing buildings that we consolidate would come down?
That's correct, and not only that, but currently, if we were to need to consolidate and we chose to take down buildings, there's an opportunity that part of that cost will be addressed by the state if this partnership were to take place.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCarty Stewart, would you help us understand a little bit more what would be happening at Fairmont? In other words, what, can you give us examples of what is considered the academic wings and what facilities here on this campus would remain in place?
Sure. So right now, where we're sitting, that's going to remain in place. Renovations to any of this area up front would start in Segment Two. The east, west, and central, those are the areas for our community that were able to come to our building tour, really got to see those areas that really have been untouched. We've done a great job in providing really state-of-the-art auditorium and athletic areas, and this is a really focused in on the instructional environment. And so we have those three kind of wings, which we would, those would come down, and in that same space, we would repurpose the same space to build a new academic wing of that area.
So the Performing Arts Center and the arena, and all of those facilities would remain in place, remain intact?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
And then at some point, I'll hear some of the, you know, with the state grant monies that we received, and actually was a partnership with OFCC, where we put our new advanced manufacturing, and we did provide some new areas for our CTC, but then some of them are still in the wing over here in buildings or in classrooms. We will be able to renovate the ones that have, that will need to be renovated during that Segment Two.
Thank you.
Great question.
I have a question, just an observation or a comment, which is just a thank you to Ms. McCarty Stewart, Mr. Blevins, and all of those who've been involved in helping the Board of Education and the district analyze what the options are for our space facilities issues. This has been going on now for considerably more than a year. The details have been discussed, I know, at length in various community forums. We've got lots of information about kind of where we are and how we got to this spot in terms of the analysis on the district's website. I know there have been hundreds, if not thousands, of conversations with community members along the way to make sure we're getting input, guidance, and good thought from all of those who have a vested interest and who are stakeholders. And so I know the board has challenged Ms. McCarty Stewart and your staff every step of the way of thinking about all the alternatives that are out there. And so I'm grateful for the work that has been done thus far. I'm grateful for the information that has been collected. I'm grateful for the work that has been done with the state and the input from the state. And so I think we, we're at a spot, at least where we are making decisions or making recommendations based on the best information we have available to us after robust discussion and thought. And so, you know, I'm grateful for that, and thank you, Ms. McCarty Stewart, and others for all of your input thus far to get us to where we are, at least tonight.
Great. Okay, before we move on to the next item, I just, Mr. Blevins, let's just let the record show that Mark Martin was able to join our meeting, but I'm going to let him have a breather, and I will continue leading us through the agenda. Okay.[1564.51][1564.51](Laughter). So, okay, Board of Education member reports, do we have anything?
I do have one thing. This evening at 7 o'clock, we are going to be inducting our three newest members of the Chet Roush Educational Hall of Fame. So when our meeting is over, we're going to flip the stage here and get rid of the tables and put some chairs up here and honor the three very deserving educators. So 7 o'clock tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. I have not been made aware of anybody who wants to speak regarding agenda items, so we will move on to information for decision-making and items for upcoming meetings. So items for upcoming meetings, November 4th, 2025, 6:00 PM, we will have a work session. We will begin visiting our elementary schools and other schools within the district, moving forward for some of our board meetings, so we have an opportunity to be present in all of our buildings throughout the district. So on November 4th, 2025, 6:00 PM, we will be at Orchard Park Elementary School, where we will have treasurer items presented, superintendent items, and board items. November 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM, we will have a regular meeting here in the recital hall at Kettering Fairmont High School, where we will discuss personnel items. December 9th, 2025, 6:00 PM, we will have a regular meeting at our Greenmont Elementary School, where we will discuss personnel items. And then January 6th, 2026, 6:00 PM organizational regular meeting, recital hall, Kettering Fairmont High School, where we will talk through personnel items. So, okay. Board of Education agenda, I believe we have a couple items there. That's the one.
Yeah, okay. I move that to certify the treasurer's certificate.
Second.
Mr. Blevins?
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawder?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number, or item B, I move to approve the resolution of necessity of bond issue.
Okay, second.
Second, sorry. Mr. Lawder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Mr. Blevins, I'm going to vote yes, but I also want to just convey some thinking here in terms of my support for this resolution to establish the necessity for a bond. It really dovetails based on what Ms. McCarty Stewart, Mr. Von Handorf, and others have shared tonight and throughout the last year at various community forums and elsewhere. And there are really three or four critical issues that drive my thinking in terms of why I think this decision tonight makes the most sense for our school district. The first is, I think it's fiscally responsible. It's a fiscally responsible decision in this respect. The information that we have, the analysis that's been done, is if we do nothing in terms of trying to work with the OFCC and construct some new buildings for our students and for our community, then the cost for us to keep up with the buildings that we have is $350 million. That cost has to be borne, unfortunately, by taxpayers. There's just no other way for our school district to fund those kinds of expenses. Given the plan that we currently have, we are looking at partnering with the state, who would contribute significantly to the tune of roughly $160 million. There's still significant cost to taxpayers, there's just no question. There's still significant cost to taxpayers, there's just no question about that, it's unavoidable, but the cost is less. And then what we would have after that is some buildings that will serve our community and our students for the next, hopefully, 70-plus years. And so I think from being fiscally responsible, one of the guiding principles for the district, I think it's something that we just simply, frankly, don't have a choice at this point but to go down this path. I also think it's responsible, it's mission responsibility. And what I mean by that is I believe that our educational demands of our students and the demands of our staff have outpaced the abilities of our buildings. You've heard from Mr. Von Handorf, who's described that when you build a building in 1950 or 1960, the purpose of that building was much different than the purpose of when our kids come to school today. Technology is much different, space needs are much different, infrastructure is much different. And so in my view, our buildings simply have lagged way behind to this point. I think it's a great thing in the respect that we've got kids who are far advanced, we've got educational demands that are more advanced than our facilities would fully support. And so I think from the perspective of our mission is always to do what's right by our students and our staff and to deliver the best possible education we can, I think it's responsible for us to satisfy our mission. The last thing that I'll share is, this is not going to get any better if we don't do something about it now. So 10 years from now, if we're having this conversation, we're having the same conversation unless we've done something about our facilities. Only by that point, it's my view that things will be exacerbated. The buildings are not going to keep up unless we sink considerable resources into our facilities. And so the options that we have are, do we figure out a way to fund that outside of partnership with the OFCC, which I think is fiscally irresponsible if we were to try that, or do we go down this path in trying to partner with the OFCC? So I think this problem is not going to get any better. The last point that I will share is, and Mr. Blevins, this is something you touched upon, is the opportunity for our district to get some contribution from the state. My belief is, it's the first time in our district's history where we've had this kind of opportunity. This doesn't come around very often, and this money that's available to the district if we go down this path, this money will be spent in another district if we are not able to take advantage of it. And that money that we're talking about from the state, that $159 or $160 million, to Mr. Blevins' point, a large portion of that has come from Kettering taxpayers. And so I would love nothing more than to see those hard-earned tax dollars that people have contributed come back to this district so that we can do our part to make sure we're delivering the best education we can and the best facilities that we possibly can to help stabilize and to continue to stabilize the city of Kettering, who, as we all have discussed before, one of the great things about our city has been the strength and the performance of our school district over the years. And so with all that being said, Mr. Blevins, I will vote yes in support of the resolution tonight.
Ms. Kane?
I will vote yes as well.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to the human capital agenda.
I move that we approve the human capital agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. McCarty Stewart?
I'm asking the board's approval of the human capital consent agenda items in your packet.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins?
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
We approve the business services agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Blevins?
We did that for you.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, and the office of the treasurer agenda. Motion?
I move that we approve the office of the treasurer agenda as it's been presented to us.
I will second that.
Okay, Mr. Blevins?
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot the clicker over here. So we are already a quarter through the fiscal year, the end of September. I know that's hard to believe. There's not a lot of variance I'm going to speak about tonight because what we're looking at in terms of our monthly reports are now related to the forecast that you passed in September. So that's been updated. For revenue, practically no variance here. $222, I'm sorry, $225,000 higher than had been forecasted. The expenditure difference, 1.4 million favorable, so this is related specifically to salaries and benefits. And if you remember, when I spoke on the forecast, I mentioned having a contingency in for possible mid-year staffing changes. So this number that you're seeing, that overage that is positive for the cash balance, is related to that. And then as you know, or you've been hearing me say for several meetings now, there's a lot of legislative changes that have come up and are going to continue to be talked about. So next month, I will be attending the Montgomery County Treasurers' meeting, where we will discuss some of those changes.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Blevins is going to take the vote.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we will move to the teaching and learning agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the teaching and learning agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. McCarty Stewart?
I'm asking the board's approval for the following teaching and learning agenda items as presented in your packet.
Ms. McCarty Stewart, the contracts with Warren County Educational Service Center, am I right that those are for provision of certain services that we don't provide in our district for various reasons, but these are obviously student-focused, and these are services that Warren County will provide to students, one or more students that come from our district?
That is correct. So you will see in the agenda, there are three Warren County Education Service Center contracts for the specific individual student needs, another one from the Green County, and then we have one for maximum nursing services. These are all individual student education plan services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Okay, next, we are moving on to hearing of the public, and I have been made aware of one guest tonight who would like to speak. So before we invite you up, we do have a statement that we like to read before we have guest speakers, just on consistency basis, so everybody knows what to expect. The Kettering Board of Education welcomes the request of members of the public to address the board during our Board of Education meeting. While the comments of members of the public are important and will be taken into consideration, please remember that per policy, Board of Education members may not engage in conversation with speakers during the hearing of the public. Participants are asked to limit comments to five minutes. The treasurer will, on behalf of the Board of Education, keep track of each speaker's time at the podium and will notify said speaker when one minute remains of the speaking time. Please, so, yeah, so we've got the form here. So Ashlyn Witt, I'd like to invite you up, please.
Hi, my name's Ashlyn Witt. I am a Fairmont graduate. My husband is as well, and we have three kids in the district. We have two kids at Southdale and one, a sixth grader at Van Buren. I know all of you are aware of the safety issue that our district and city seem to be having with our students getting struck on the way to or from school. I spoke at the city council meeting last week about this as well, and the concern of making our school zones and our city as a whole safer for our students when they're walking to and from school. We live within walking distance of Southdale, and my kindergartner and my third grader walk to school and walk home every day. It's something that they're very proud of, and I would hate to take away from them if things got unsafe. But I have seen my own students, I've seen our crossing guard have to put her body between cars and students in Crossing Dorothy, and that's not something that she should have to do, and that's not something that our students should not be unsafe on their way to and from school. So I presented at the council meeting last week that I feel that this is a threefold solution, that we have safer intersections, there's ways to do this, that is a city problem. They are the ones that can repaint lines and, you know, put up poles and do stuff like that. Police enforcement, which is also a city solution, and then education, which is where our schools come in, that it is important that our students seem to not be getting the how-to-cross-the-street talk from parents all the time, and that as educators, we can step into that. And I've had a really good conversation with the city this week about possibly making videos for the city's YouTube channel that it would be easy for teachers to show our students using, utilizing something like our CTC program to help make those. We put on Safety Village, which is an amazing thing that our district does, so we have these resources, and using Safety Village and police officers and making it so that it's something that can be used year after year, so that we are teaching our kids, hey, you need to be looking both ways, you need to be listening to your crossing guard, don't be on your cell phone, don't have your, you know, AirPods in, like, all of those things. And I also want to say that more pedestrian-friendly places and cyclist-friendly places are something that my husband and I are passionate about, and we love to see for Kettering. These things aren't things that are being done in our area by anybody. So the opportunity for Kettering to be the forerunner in things like, things called daylighting, this is paint and poles that make it more safe for kids to cross streets, bumpouts, making the space that you have to cross the street shorter, and it makes cars slow down, things like raised crosswalks, this would work amazing over at KMS. What you're doing is it's almost like a speed bump, but you're also taking kids who are short and you are raising them up so that they are easier to see. All of these things are so simple and so easy and something that the city can do without, this isn't like a big infrastructure change, these are small additions that are paint and poles and very easy to do and very easy ways we could get the community involved in that too. So really, what I'm up here for is because I want support from the board, from our administration, things like that, I'm going to the board meeting, or to the council meeting again next week, I'm bringing a cohort of other parents who also have walkers, who are very upset that they've reached out to the city and really haven't gotten a response from that. They don't feel like they're being supported by the city as a whole or by the police department, and want to know, how are we keeping our kids safe? And I'm just asking that the people that have power also are speaking up about this and speaking with the city and letting them know, like, hey, this is important for our kids. Our kids can't learn if they can't get to school without being hit by a car, okay? Like, we need to really look at that. And I just, there are, my husband and I love this city. We graduated from here, we moved to Cincinnati for college, thought that that was going to be everything, that we were going to stay down here, and then moved back here so that we could raise our kids here because we love it so much. And I just want the best for our students, not just mine, but all of them, and for our city as a whole to be a leader in our bigger Montgomery County area as well. And so I hope that you will support that and move that forward, as I do my best to also move that forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. We appreciate it. Okay, we are now at the point where I will motion for adjournment.
So move?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.